So here we are again. Welcome back, everybody.
Well, so.
Is this me?
I did.
Aye.
The Mayans approve.
That's so sweet.
(laughing).
Okay. Two important work session items tonight back to business is, oh, something new in Vision Eugene.
(laughing). Thank you, Mayor, and it's great to be back. Hope everybody enjoyed their time off in their summer. I know we all did. So I'll turn it over to Robin and Terry to kind of walk us through some information.
Great. Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We wanted to come out with In Vision Eugene right out of the gates, just to make sure nobody forgot what we're doing here. We're entering into a phase of pretty intensive work in public outreach, and we felt it was important, since it may be several months before we actually come back to council with this, that you know what's going on and what's happening during those intervening months. So here is our lead staff for In Vision Eugene to explain more about that, is Terry Harding, and I'll just turn it right over.
Thank you, Robin. So I'm going to talk about how we land In Vision Eugene. It's really exciting to be able to say those words, because as you know, we've been working on it for a long time. Here's a glimpse of where we are on this timeline. When we left off with you in July, you had just provided us with direction on housing to set a baseline UGB, urban growth boundary, establish a strong monitoring program, and update the needed housing regulations, and start planning for urban reserves. And earlier this year, you provided us your direction on expanding the UGB for jobs, parks, and schools in the Clear Lake and Santa Clara areas. So now where we are, in the red circle there, is poised to launch our formal adoption process of the urban growth boundary and the policies to guide growth for the next 20 years. Over the summer, we've not been taken a break. We've been working hard with the Planning Commission, the Technical Resource Group, the subcommittees of the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners, who we updated on September 1st, to draft working versions of all of the components of the UGB adoption package. So what's in that package? Most importantly, the two items involved here, the Metro Plan Amendments and the Comprehensive Plan Policies, have been being drafted. Under Oregon state law, these are the components that we must adopt when we go forward and amend our UGB or adopt a new one. And collectively, we refer to these components as the UGB Adoption Package. The required elements in addition to the Metro Plan Amendments and Comp Plan Policies are Public Facilities and Services Plan Amendments, Transportation Plan Amendments, Amendments to our Land Use Code, zone changes, including the Clear Lake overlay for the Bethel Expansion Area, and then a lengthy set of technical support documents, like the Build of the Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis, those sorts of things, and legal findings that show that we comply with all of the relevant laws. These are the documents that must be reviewed and adopted through our formal adoption process with Lane County. So going forward, in order to dive a little bit deeper into the Metro Plan and Comprehensive Plan, this is how the Metro Plan will relate to our new Comprehensive Plan for Eugene. In order to separate our UGB from Springfield, we need to amend the Metro Plan. So staff has been working on pulling certain policies out of that Metro Plan and migrating them over to a new Eugene-specific Comprehensive Plan, and Springfield is doing similar work. When Eugene does adopt its new UGB, will it be adopting it along with policies required to accompany it, such as housing and economic development policies? Other policies, such as those related to planning for public facilities and other things, will remain in the Metro Plan and in effect for Eugene until we come back later to complete our Eugene-specific Comprehensive Plan as part of a later amendment process after UGB adoption is complete. And I'll explain that a little more as we delve into the Comprehensive Plan. This diagram here shows the process for amending the UGB and adopting our adoption package. It's spelled out in state law and in the Metro Plan. And on this diagram, you can see how the recommendation from 2012 and your direction in 2015 really inform the creation of this new regulatory document. The UGB and Comp Plan must follow the required formal adoption process, which includes hearings by both the Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions, and they in turn make recommendations to their respective elected officials. After you each hold a public hearing and consider a public comment and make the decision to adopt, the package is then forwarded to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development for their acknowledgement. So that's kind of the outline of the formal process there. Getting a little bit more into the detail of the Comprehensive Plan, so it's called Phase 1 because they're the elements that we feel are essential to adopt the urban growth boundary. We are working on chapters covering public involvement, compact development, economic development, housing, transportation, and administration implementation, and then the UGB itself on a map within the plan. The growth monitoring program will be adopted as regulatory policy within this administration and implementation policy, or chapter, excuse me. And those monitoring policies have been developed through a pretty extensive process, working with the Technical Resource Group, following your direction. After we complete the UGB adoption, we'll come back, this is a kind of preview of future work on the Comprehensive Plan, to address really important issues, including natural resources, community health and livability, community resilience, public facilities, and a parcel-specific land use map. Until this work is done, Eugene will be relying on the existing policies in the Metro Plan and the Metro Plan Land Use Diagram. Okay? So now that you have an overview of the UGB Adoption Package itself and the process, I want you to know that the other community work on In Vision Eugene will not get lost. So there's another column on this graphic here that's shown up as non-regulatory. As you know, when we started In Vision Eugene, the project was focused on the urban growth boundary, but it has always been about more than the line itself. It's been an opportunity to create a collective vision and a path to get us there. So the remaining components of In Vision Eugene provide critical context and a path to implement the community's vision in the future, and they're pretty important. They will just be brought forward in a different way than the UGB Adoption Package documents. These are the Eugene Vision, the Urban Form Plan, and the Action Plan, and they should be discussed really as part of the whole package along a similar timeline for the UGB Adoption Package. But they do not require the participation of Lane County or a formal adoption process. Instead, the vision and action documents will go through a parallel process of community input and city planning commission and council endorsement. An example of an item that will be carried forward into the Action Plan is the programmatic aspects of the monitoring plan that you've given us direction to implement. As we move into the UGB Adoption Process itself, public engagement will continue to be a cornerstone of the process. From community input to the Community Resource Group, the Technical Resource Group, and all the city boards, commissions, committees, and the general public, this transparent and intensive community approach is anticipated to continue, and we think is central to getting community support. So this timeline is outlining the major phases of engagement and review coming up. It's in your packet, and I know it's hard to read on this slide, so I've broken it into four steps here on the next slide. The first step is publishing working drafts of our urban growth boundary and comprehensive plan chapters, which, again, we've been working on since July, and this will continue through the end of September. The next step is publication of a preliminary draft of these documents. So the UGB and Comp Plan chapters that I outlined previously will be on the streets along with draft vision and action plan documents from October through December. And the intent with this phase is really to get as much input and feedback as we can before submitting our adoption package to the state. That's the next step. The revised draft, too, will be the complete UGB Adoption Package. So if you recall, the list, including all the amendments and code changes and zoning, that whole package will be published and ready to go in January, and we'll proceed through the formal adoption process, starting with the Planning Commissions, from about January through April. And after we get the Planning Commission's recommendations, we'll produce a draft that reflects those recommendations and bring those forward for consideration by the decision-makers. And that'll happen May through July, anticipated. Some upcoming key dates, and all of this will be available on envisioneugene.org. And new events and meetings will be added as they are scheduled, starting with today. We updated our Planning Commission on the working drafts of the Comprehensive Plan, and this Thursday, we've got a workshop with boards and commissions from across the city to discuss the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. And rather than reading all of those for you, I think I'll just let you look and move into questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So as you've been talking to people, I saw you at Neighborhood Events this weekend, right? What are you hearing from people?
This weekend, I was at the Southeast Neighbors Picnic, mostly focusing on the South Willamette Plan. However, it was a good opportunity to share this timeline on In Vision Eugene, so we're really at the front end of any sort of public outreach on the UGB itself.
There.
Thank you, Mayor. Guys, thanks for the work on this, and Robin, thank you as well for the opportunity the other day to talk about the South Willamette Plan in more detail and help make sure I understood that better. I appreciated your time on that. Can you remind me again, when we spoke about that, I forgot to ask, what's the deadline for council to approve the Willamette area plan?
Go ahead. We're scheduled to bring that forward to you in October, but there isn't a deadline.
Okay. So we will dispose of that, one way or another, before we get to the end of this process for In Vision Eugene. That's the plan right now?
That's the plan.
Yes, absolutely. That is the plan.
Okay, excellent. I also watched your presentation to the Board of County Commissioners the other day, and I noticed that in previous presentations, there was concern amongst four of the commissioners regarding the idea of using the outdated population figures that we've decided to go ahead and use. One of the things that I heard said was, by a couple of commissioners, the idea that we're going to move forward with this three-year expedited review of and urban reserves planning, so that that's finished in three years on the schedules that we've talked about at this table. But I also heard Commissioner Bozovic, who's one of those folks, ask us for a contract to make sure that we're actually going to do it by then. Is it appropriate, I suppose, for this body to respond, considering that the commissioners have so much invested in what we're planning to do in the future as a part of their approval process for this? Is it wise for this council to respond in some way by some voter nodding of heads, that we are on the same page with the commissioners about all of this?
Yeah, I think the council could do that. One of our intents with asking you to approve dollars to go start and do the work, you might remember, as part of the July work session, we said up to $750,000 over the next couple of years to actually do the work. Part of our intent was to use as a signal that we're all committed to doing it, because we can go contract for work to do the work. So if the council also wanted to do something else, it wouldn't be inappropriate, but that was the intent of also committing those dollars.
I'd be happy to do that, but I have to say, I'd probably be more comfortable if it were staff-driven in terms of coordination, just so that we're making sure that we're all hearing and agreeing on the same kind of step-by-step procedures from here. I mean, obviously, as everybody knows, you know, we can't bind some future council to do something differently. But I think having a clear understanding between all the bodies about what the next couple of years look like would be advantageous.
Okay. We can try to coordinate with them and see how we can make that clear.
Thank you.
George.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is to separate our urban growth boundary from Springfield's and not really especially related directly to figuring out if and by how much we need to expand our own urban growth boundary, the new one that we'll be adopting, or is that running parallel with this embedded in here?
It is embedded. The UGB Adoption Package would set the UGB, including the two expansion areas that you've given direction to us on, in Clear Lake and Santa Clara, and also establish the line down I-5 to separate us from Springfield.
Okay, right. But what about for the housing? All the housing?
Yeah, it would set a...
Areas that were chosen and then abandoned when it turned out we didn't have to expand for housing.
Right. So the July 20th meeting, the direction you gave us was to set the UGB as it is now for housing, so that would be part of the UGB adoption. We would set it as it is, and then also commit to the monitoring process and urban reserve planning.
Right. The 50-year planning horizon now. Okay. And then I've got a couple of questions. I just don't understand what this means. On page four, Comprehensive Plan Phase 2, after UGB adoption, community health and livability, what exactly, I mean, is that in the document now? Is there some section that...
It's envisioned as a new chapter of Eugene's Comprehensive Plan. So once we finish with the UGB adoption, there are still some items that need to be carried forward to fully implement the vision. And so the policies that currently exist in the Metro Plan related to livability will remain until we can give enough time and resources to adopting our own chapter.
Okay. And then my last question for now is, just directly underneath that, community resilience? What does that mean?
That is a reflection of the Climate and Energy Action Plan and the community's goals around resiliency to natural hazards or climate change.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Ellen?
George asked a lot of the questions they had, but first off, very good presentation. It was very clear. Thanks for getting us the kind of the roadmap of where we're going. That's real helpful to me, anyway, and kind of a timeline for getting there. The one thing that wasn't real super clear, because I think it's kind of new, is this Urban Form Plan, which is kind of a new term, I think that we put into this mix of 1 million different terms, different things. Can you explain what that means a little bit more than what it said right here?
Sure.
And what the community design handbook will look like?
Sure. So the Urban Form Plan is the place where we explain the vision in pictures and words in a more illustrative manner. So we see it as a place that can provide inspiration to the development community and to residents about what we value and what's expressed in the vision in a more visual way. The Community Design Handbook is most of that plan, and it has been in progress for two or three years, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, building on our experience with infill compatibility and opportunity citing and all of these design-centered projects that have really been going on in the community for a number of years. So it's bringing that all forward as part of the whole plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
You.
Thanks, guys.
It was very helpful. Okay, next up, we have the Sustainability Commission Work Plan and Annual Report.
I'll turn it over to Babe to introduce the topic, her team, and the information.
Great, thank you. I have with me tonight the chair, and hopefully soon, the vice chair of the Sustainability Commission, running a little early. Howard Saxon is here to present both the annual report for the activities of the previous year and the work plan for FY '16 going forward. So I'll turn it over to Howard.
Thanks, Babe. Good evening. Thanks for inviting us to talk a little bit about what the Sustainability Commission did this past year, and then I'd also like to present to you our proposed work plan for this coming fiscal year. I was expecting my co-chair to be here, but I'll go ahead and proceed, just in interest of time. So what I'd like to do is just maybe walk through briefly our accomplishments this past year in our annual report, and then I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that we went through in developing our proposed work plan for this coming fiscal year. I didn't just give you a brief overview, and I realize that you have these documents, but I would like to at least hit some of the highlights. This past year, we had five major focus areas: In Vision Eugene, carbon fee, climate recovery ordinance, transportation system plan, and pedestrian bicycle master plan, adaptation planning, and sustainable economic development. Our accomplishments in the area of In Vision Eugene, as you can see and read, our commission has been very busy this past year, but we participated on task forces with members of other commissions on the residential and industrial urban growth boundaries. We participated in joint meetings that were with the Planning Commission representatives, Human Rights Commission, Beyond Toxic's groups, and staff to work on, at least on the industrial part, the zoning overlay, and then heavily active on looking at TBL for the residential urban growth boundary discussions. We participated in meetings with city planning staff and provided In Vision Eugene context in the growth monitoring plan, and then we submitted comments on preliminary staff recommendations on the UGB expansion. For carbon fee, climate recovery, we reviewed the carbon fee study that was prepared by Portland State University under the direction of the state legislature, and provided our comments and impressions of that report to you all. Based on that review, we prepared a draft resolution for your consideration, which was subsequently endorsed by the council, which supported a carbon fee proposal for the state of Oregon. On the transportation system plan, we, as a commission, have been very heavily involved with meetings with staff to look at the components of the transportation system plan, especially as it relates to complete streets policies or look-alike policies like that, as well as the concept of Vision Zero in planning. We've also been interacting with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We've met with, along with staff, representatives of Oregon Department of Transportation to discuss issues related to the various proposals that would expand and improve safety on Beltline. We've also monitored the progress on South Willamette Street reconstruction, which that trial, I guess, is going to start early next year. On adaptation planning, the commission has attempted to connect the dots between current and proposed actions by the community at large and the city councils related to climate change and natural hazard mitigation and adaptation opportunities, and this document will be used to support comments to the council on various actions. On sustainable economic development... Don worked on it for a bit. Just, how's that for a segue?
There you go. Excuse me. I apparently misunderstood the meeting time, so...
They were more efficient than we thought.
Yeah, okay.
We anticipated.
All right, well, that's a good thing.
It's a good thing for everybody to understand that when we say 45 minutes for one thing, then 45 minutes for the next, many times it could go over, it could go under, so you have to kind of got that.
I had heard the rumor that they might go over once in a while, but I was unaware of the possibility.
It happens, it happens.
That's the thing. Not as frequent.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, sustainable economic development. We focused on understanding, we feel that sustainability is a great way to connecting the dots between economic development and jobs and prosperity, economic prosperity for the city is very much supported by sustainability goals, and we focused specifically on understanding the successes and needs of local food-based businesses this year, and we conducted interviews with a number of food businesses and several agencies and compiled those results. We then helped convene a meeting with the Willamette Farm and Food Coalition at BRING to discuss a possible fit in the proposed Clear Lake urban growth boundary expansion, and solicited from the businesses that attended, you know, what their needs were, what their plans are in the next few years, to try to see if there's a good fit there. We also reviewed the Climate and Energy Action Plan and identified junction points for economic development opportunities. So since that, those efforts, at the very end of the planning year, we have received contacts from the Chamber of Commerce and Lane County reaching out to us to request information from us and input in the very varied and extensive food business planning efforts that are going on locally.
Okay. Thanks, Don. For our work plan development for this coming fiscal year, we met with the mayor and the city manager to help us identify what the council and staff priorities were going to be this coming year, as well as any other issues, and how the commission could better align its work with your work and with the work of the staff. The commission devoted two, four-hour planning meetings, as well as numerous meetings and discussions by our various focus groups that were working on different elements of the work plan. This draft work plan attempts to focus on the likely council and city manager staff priorities and those issues that are anticipated to be coming up this coming year. We're very mindful of the commission's role in helping the council and city manager connect the sustainability dots and be a resource on sustainability issues. We stand ready to help the council on these important issues, as well as others that might arise that we don't know about yet. Anyway, and we also just want to acknowledge and let you know, we appreciate the council's new policy that allows commission representatives to speak first at council meetings on issues that are related to the work of the commission. So I think that would be very helpful, and we definitely intend to take advantage of that. So for this year, the Sustainability Commission identified four primary areas of our focus: land use and transportation, climate change mitigation and resilience, In Vision Eugene, and sustainable economic development. But we also acknowledge that there are what I would call emerging issues, although some wouldn't say they're emerging, they're on us now, but it's where the commission can be of assistance to the council and city manager. On transportation and land use, there's going to be a lot coming up this next year, as you know, and what we would like to do is link In Vision Eugene with the transportation system plan and other land use and transportation decisions and policies in practice. Coming up this fall, the transportation system plan will be updated, and we will provide comments to the Planning Commission and to the council concerning complete streets, Vision Zero, funding priorities, including Beltline, and consistency with In Vision Eugene. In addition to the transportation system plan, there's a number of other initiatives that are going on in our community, including the Moving Ahead, In Vision Eugene Updates, the Bike Share Program, the South Willamette Street Test, the street bond, street repair bond measure, which we anticipate there'll be discussions about that next year in anticipation of the possibility of another bond going out to the public, to the voters in 2017, and then the Parks and Recreation Plan update. On climate change mitigation and resilience, we want to promote and support investments and policies that help mitigate adverse effects of climate change and natural disasters and increase resiliency of those impacts which cannot be mitigated. And in that regard, we will work to review the emission reduction strategies and timeline for reaching the climate recovery ordinance goals. We want to work collaboratively with the city manager and staff to develop climate recovery ordinance evaluation criteria. We want to explore the concept of a local greenhouse gas reduction program to support emission reductions to meet the recovery ordinance goals, and we want to help educate the community on climate change and natural disaster mitigation efforts. For In Vision Eugene, we want to link In Vision Eugene... For In Vision Eugene, we want to link In Vision Eugene with the Climate Recovery Ordinance and Sustainability. We will be providing comments and recommendations to the council, mayor, and city manager on proposed updates to In Vision Eugene, especially as it relates to Pillar Three, which is planned for climate change and uncertainty, and Pillar Seven, In Vision Eugene Implementation. And for sustainable economic development, we would like to promote sustainable economic development within Eugene and surrounding areas. And we want to serve as a voice for integrating sustainability principles into economic prosperity policies. And finally, on emerging issues, we have a pretty, we feel a pretty overwhelming work plan as it is now, but it is a plan. And so we want to make sure that we maintain commission capacity as volunteers to address emerging issues where we may be of assistance, where we may be requested by the council and city manager to be of assistance. And some of those issues could be affordable housing, Solarise Eugene, and other renewable energy projects, the 2021 World Track and Field Championships, which has the potential of being very transformational to the city, and a railroad quiet zone. And those are just a few that we thought about, but there may be others. So we appreciate your time, and Dawn and I would be welcome any comments and questions you may have of us. Thank you.
So I know Alan serves on the Sustainability Commission, so I'm going to ask him to respond in a minute. Mike has had his hands up, too. I just want to say, first of all, I just am so impressed with this work plan. It's so well thought out, and it really moves us towards the integration that I think you would like to see us do. So I think this is wonderful. And I wanted to also thank you for your impetus for the June meeting. I thought it was really informative and helpful, and I guess we need to keep our eyes on how that moves along, too. Everything moves along slower than we want it to, so it takes some constant kind of nudging. So that's just the nature of life, I think. Alan?
Everything moves slower, except for our first agenda item.
That's right.
Sustainability Commission lost some members due to term limits and new jobs and people moving on, and, but we've been revitalized and some great new people, great members, and so strong as ever. Good leadership in Dawn and Howard and the committee structure that we have, which is based, the four committees are based around the work plan items. They've been very active this year, meeting with the HRC, input on In Vision Eugene and participation there, Clear Lake Overlay in part, the Carbon Fee Study and the resolution that we put forward, participating in the Climate Recovery Ordinance, which actually started in the Sustainability Commission. The Connecting the Dots document, which is an internal document, it's pretty dense, but it has a lot of ways of connecting the dots. And if you put it into a Venn diagram, it'd be so confusing, you wouldn't be able to see it. Participation on the Technical Resources Group, the TSP, Beltline, BikePed, Complete Streets, South Willamette are all big transportation issues that have gigantic sustainability issues to them, as well as the Willamette Farm and Food Coalition meeting around with the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield and the food business leaders was a pretty important meeting, I think, moving forward, especially as it relates to the Clear Lake area. And then looking at the Climate and Energy Action Plan and how opportunities are embedded in that that relate to economic development are also important. The work plan, I think, is, was over several meetings. It wasn't by accident, it became out as well as it did. It's very well organized. The topic, the description, the outcomes, the planned actions, and the timeline are a great way to do this, and I think other committees should take note of that. The four topic areas, I think, are the right ones. Land use and transportation, climate change, In Vision Eugene, and sustainable economic development are all on par with each other, and they're all big issues. It's a lot of good detailing here and good balance between follow-through on things that we were already doing and adding a smattering of new stuff. It is a little bit overwhelming, but when you have a committee like this that's active, things that nobody wanted to participate on fell off the list. So the things that are in here are things that people want to do, and I think we'll get a lot of input from the Sustainability Commission. As probably with every commission or board and commission that we have, I know that the Sustainability Commission would appreciate more feedback from the council, more interaction with the council on a regular basis, and more direction with specific things, please look at this. And I think that's a good way to, for council, to think about how we move forward with our boards and commissions. We don't do that very often. I think it's a good thing to use our commissions to be able to look at and inform us on the things that we're looking at. But, good job, you guys, thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Howard, Dawn, thank you very much, and thanks to all the members of the commission. I appreciate both the work that goes, the work that you do and the work that goes into creating a report and a work plan, because having served on a few commissions myself, I understand that. It's quite a bit of work to help us understand your work, and I appreciate it very much. I have a couple of questions, and then in following Alan's lead here, I have an emerging issue that touches on two of your topics, that I think, I would, I for one would love to see the Sustainability Commission weigh in on and do some research and do some work to help us, because we can't seem to get the information anywhere else. So I will ask you, in the process of your work in In Vision Eugene this last year, especially here in the report where it says, and outcomes under number one, providing comments and recommendations both to us and the manager with regard to In Vision Eugene, but especially as it relates to what climate change will look like and what shall we do with regard to implementation in Pillar Seven. I want to know if you did any work around the idea of climate change effect on population movement and/or any work to try and study what we might expect in the way of climate refugees? And then I'll get to a specific ask. I just want to know if you guys did anything on that or studied anything on it?
We did not. It came up in our discussions that, why is this not being talked about, kind of a thing? I think it is kind of a gorilla in the room around many of the national and international conversations that are being held about sustainability. It's, nobody, it's, I think, so mysterious. People, I don't see a lot happening in the sustainability literature in any practical way. There's some talking around the edges, but I don't see information, really predictions, science being applied to it yet.
I haven't read or seen anything as far as any projections. You know, as Dawn said, there's a lot of discussions and there's concerns, especially if you look at the long-term drought in California, you know, whether that's going to be an impetus or, that might even, you know, it's not only population that might increase, but, you know, there's some discussion about agriculture shifting from California to places that, you know, are perceived to have more water. Not sure that that's true, but, so there's, I think there's just a lot of discussion and nobody really has a good handle on it. Because, you know, it's a free country and people can move around, and there's, you know, a lot of, I think, people make a lot of, you know, taken kind of a lot of different things about their decisions to move to a different location or not, so.
Was interesting. I went back this year to the University of Oregon and finished my degree finally at my advanced age. And one of the classes that I took was a 3:00 PM class called The City, to which Matt came and was a guest lecturer, and Mark Schlossberg taught the class. What we heard fairly constantly through that was to expect the change in population. What we heard fairly constantly at that level was that there was at least some degree of beginning levels of research around this, and I think I heard Matt say that as well when he was speaking to us. And I asked several people about that and was told there was some literature in some places, but it was hard to find. Then I called Lisa Pearl up at the Population Forecast Center at Portland State, and I asked her about her methodology, and she said that they take, they took the 2000 census and projected it with the, looked at the change to the 2010 census, and then project forward. That's how they come up with our population forecast. And then they take the demographic groups and say, these ones are old enough to have, these ones are going to die, here's what we expect the number to be. There is a minute, minute fraction of a percentage that they alter with outstanding factors. But clearly, one of the things she said to me was that they do not make any allowance for climate refugees or for anything that the climate is likely to do with regard to population shifts. We've taken now the outdated, oh, I only have 12 seconds left. We've taken the outdated numbers, and I guess I'm going to need a second round. Why don't we go that way? I'll start with the second round.
I've got Greg, and then Claire, and then Betty, and then George Brown in the queue. My only comment about that is when you wake up last week and see a million people moving from one place to another, all bets are off, right? All bets are off about what's going to happen in the future and where it's going to happen. And I also think that we have historically thought we're going to have the water. I don't know if we think that that's true anymore because of the snowpack issue. So those are things that are sort of mixed up in this conversation. And you'll get back, I'll get back to you. All right, great.
Well, to kind of continue on that same vein with Counselor Clark, he didn't quite steal my thunder, but I got a little piece of thunder left on this one. I will point you in the direction of National League of Cities and the Western States Association. The last two meetings that I attended of that group, the topic was water, and the topic was the Pacific Northwest, and the projected migration of not just people in the United States, but people from all over the hemisphere kind of focusing in on the Pacific Northwest because of the abundance of clean water that we apparently have that will be in very short supply, should we add a few more million people in Washington and Oregon. So I think it's, there is, there are some people that are actually studying this out there. I have to go back through my notes, I could probably get you some names and contacts, but last, the last, the last conference that I was in, I think, where were we, Betty? I can't remember. Ready more now, but I think it was Austin.
Austin.
It was in Austin. That was the whole Western States meeting, was dedicated to a presentation on that, actually from a woman from California who went to the University of Oregon. So I'll have to pull that up out of my, my stuff at home. The other thing is, has the Sustainability Commission had any robust conversations or conversations at all with E-Web and other water and power providers about their specific plans around these? I know they have a sustainability plan and all of that, and how is our Sustainability Commission coordinating those specific conversations around water and energy resource management vis a vis, you know, what our long-term prognosis is in this area?
We haven't had specific issues come up that have required us to talk to E-Web about, you know, water supply availability or, you know, forecast, supply forecast as well as energy forecast. But I think this year, we're, I think, going to be more focused on climate change mitigation and adaptation, and I think those conversations are likely to come up. And, you know, I think the plan is to reach out to E-Web on that, as well as, you know, the possibility of other things like greenhouse reduction programs and things. So I think our intent will be to try to reach out to, you know, other stakeholders like E-Web and others.
I think, I think the word was water is the new oil.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would just add that the, in this last year, the effort that we did in the Adaptation Planning Committee, taking that Hazard Risk Mitigation document, work that Matt's been doing, and over, sort of looking at it from a broad sustainability perspective and climate change, and specifically, that Connect the Dot document, document that Alan alluded to, is what we're using internally to help us organize our approach to that. And water and energy are two of the biggies in those, two of the big dots that are connected there.
Yeah, I will say, you know, water's a big issue, but you've got to remember, too, that in a lot of Western states, 80 to 90% of the water that's used is for agriculture, not industrial and municipal use. And so when you look at California drought, the economic dislocations there have probably been primarily focused on, you know, the agricultural sector, both economically and jobs and everything. So it's a complex issue, and just because in areas in drought doesn't necessarily mean that that in itself will create, you know, a lot of migration for a large percentage of population. It may be the agricultural sector that may be looking with, you know, interest in a Pacific Northwest because of water availability and the amount of land that could be irrigated for, you know, various crops and things. So I would just say it's a complex issue.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're arresting people for watering their lawns in California now.
Yeah. Well, you know, the old saying is, is that whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting.
Claire?
Thank you. So I'm very impressed with breadth of activities of your commission this past year. And, you know, you engaged on a number of fronts, but clearly with a really strategic approach, you know, that maximized your time and stayed focused on your core mission. So congratulations. I think, you know, we have great boards and commissions, but I think you've really set a high bar in terms of laying out a plan and sticking to it and making it relevant to your work in a very real way and relevant to the work of so many things going on in the city. So in terms of your plan for the future, I also like that a lot. And I really appreciate you guys thinking about how you intersect with the various planning efforts that we have, because I think that's a really appropriate role for you to play in terms of the triple bottom line analysis that you can bring to those planning documents. And so I'm going to make my pitch that I often make when the Sustainability Commission is before me, and really encourage you to look at the social equity impacts or benefits of those various pieces of work that you are considering. Because I think, along with addressing the environmental impacts, your commission is uniquely positioned to help us think through the social equity impacts of the work that we're trying to accomplish out in the community. And there really isn't another place. The Human Rights Commission could do that, but it's, they take a different approach to the work from what you guys are bringing to it. So I'm going to really be relying on you to bring forward that piece as much as you're able within the context of the whole plan that you have. And then I just wanted to speak to Counselor Zlinka's encouragement that we interact with the commission more directly. I think that's very good encouragement, and I just want to say that my appointee, Sue Walling, is very good about reaching out to me, asking me to take a look at the draft plan, asking me if I have any issues, finding a time to meet. So your commissioners are at least doing their part to reach out and try to get us to engage with the commission, so I appreciate that very much. And I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Betty?
Thank you. I do have some questions. First, I, my very first goal-setting meeting with the city council, I suggested that sustainability be a goal, and people looked at me as if to say, what is that? That was 19 years ago, almost. And I was really thrilled when the mayor suggested, became interested in sustainability. I was so interested that the first meeting that was called, someone plowed into my new car and wrecked it. It's an old car now. It's getting to be an old car. And I still went to the meeting, and a big truck that they brought to me to drive, which I couldn't really drive, that was how interested I was. But I, one, I'm interested in whether you think the existence of the commission is making a difference in what we do. And that's just a general question. And do you have, what do you think about the, you seem to have accepted the expansion of the UGB, the Urban Growth Boundary. Do you see that as being related to sustainability and to climate change? Does Espral contribute to climate change? And I wonder if you've discussed that or thought about it. And then I'll go ahead with my other question. You can say whatever you want after that. Have you discussed the rezoning of South Willamette? And is that in any way related to sustainability, to equity, to pollution? And, one more. El Rapa now and then discusses controlling automobile emissions, and we never get anywhere. But I wonder if you've considered getting in touch with El Rapa also? Any of those you'd like to respond to?
I'll start.
You want to start? Well, the, as far as the commission's existence, this will be my third year, so I have a pretty short history of how the Sustainability Commission and the council have interacted. All I can say is that we, going forward, want... All I can say is that we, going forward, want to be engaged more. We'd like to be a resource to the council. We have a very diverse group on the commission. People, well, you know, I'm retired now, but, you know, all my career was in the private sector as a consultant. We have a representative from the chamber and academia and small business owners. And so it's a very diverse group. And so I think we hopefully can bring a perspective to the council and its considerations on policies and things.
I would just add that, because I've been on a little bit longer, I would add that I think we have made a difference in terms of substantive, helpful, hopefully helpful, certainly input to the council on transportation planning. Lots and lots of participation from commission members in transportation system plans, BPAC, lots of the Willamette planning. So certainly have had input on those things. It's my understanding that some of the conversations happening around the UGB expansion and the kinds of activities that the city is hoping to encourage in that area have our input in it, you know, trying to guide how that, if you're going to grow jobs in that area, can we, can we be selective about those jobs so that they, those jobs end up feeding us and supporting us for the long term and making us a more resilient community? It's my understanding that some of our input is being, at least at this juncture in the draft documents, being included. And of course, I would also say that the carbon, the carbon fee resolution was something that we, and our input on the climate recovery ordinance. So those are all examples that I can think of off the top of my head that I feel that the commission has had a direct impact on decisions that have been made and plans that have been implemented through the city.
We have had, you know, of course, discussions on the transportation plan as well as it relates to South Willamette. We haven't really had any discussions about the proposal to rezone the South Willamette area. With respect to UGB, we did have a lot of concerns about the residential expansion. And we were, you know, very active participants in that process. I attended probably about eight to 10 meetings on the Clear Lake UGB with the planning commission representatives and Human Rights Commission representatives. I think the concern there is growth and impact to agricultural lands. But if you accept the position that the city needs large acreage tracts for industry, which don't exist now, then that area is probably about the only place you could expand. And so the issue will be how you do that responsibly? How do you preserve those large tracts? How do you attract the kinds of industry that you want that creates, you know, good jobs and long-term jobs and also protects residential areas? You know, the environmental justice issues there are important. And so we had a lot of discussion about the kinds of industries that you don't want there. And I think that all of the commission representatives that participated with staff made a, I think, helped educate the staff because some of us have a background in environmental regulation and industrial development and things like that, which the staff, that's not their primary area of expertise. So I think we were able in that regard to make some significant impact, if you will, on the development of the zoning overlay, which will be coming to the council for approval at some point. So I think there are going to be a lot of other opportunities this coming year. I think we're, we will be very actively participating and hopefully being able to provide, you know, our perspectives and to the council and its decisions.
Did you discuss whether we need the type of industries that take large tracts of land?
Well, you know, we were relying on, I'm not a planner and I don't do economic development. You know, my background has been in environmental regulation. But we, the staff did their analysis and we took it at face value that there was an apparent need for that kind of property because none exists now within the, within the existing growth boundary. So if you accept that premise, then, you know, that's certainly debatable, but if you accept that premise, then I think the decision is, you know, how do you responsibly?
Okay. I think we should maybe question the premise, but I just, I'm not sure where I read it. I think it was in the New Yorker that a lot of industries are moving into the center of the city, that they don't need much space, but they need the contact with other, with other people, other similar people. And maybe the kinds of things that require a lot of space are not the kinds of things we need, which is something I think we should think about. Thank you. That's all.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, this, just this ties right in with what you were just saying. I'm looking at page five of your 2016 work plan. And it says planned activities. Attend Clear Lake UGB expansion planning discussions to help ensure protection of ag land. But what you just said kind of is the exact opposite of what's in your work plan because it sounds like you approve all that land out there being covered up by industries, which is, the council majority has approved that.
If I may speak to that a little bit, I would say that as commissioners, it is a ever-present tension between advising and providing help. And we see our role as being supportive of the council and supportive of the community, of course. And in places where the, there are times certainly when it seems we don't, we don't, we're not decision makers. So we want to support good decisions. And when decisions are made by council and are, and a direction is clearly being taken by council, we often see it our role to help advise in the how. So not the what so much anymore at that point. It becomes the how. How we expand out in Clear Lake UGB area, how we expand the UGB in that area is extremely important for long-term sustainability. And if we leave the door open for agricultural activity to still continue out there for as long as we can, and if we are flexible and nimble about how we plan that area, and if we have the priorities of sustainability and sustainable economic development, then that will very much influence on what gets paved and what doesn't get paved. Those are, how you do it out there is a critical decision. So we try to provide hopefully practical and practical perspectives on if you're going to do this, then here's the most sustainable how we can help you create.
Okay. But it's my understanding that council majority is all set to approve that, or actually already gave direction, I think. And it's just hard for me to understand how you can help ensure protection of ag land, end of quote, when council is, thinks it's just perfectly fine to cover all up with industrial properties and parking lots. And it just seems to fly in the face of some of the other things that you guys are working on and that we are too. Food security, you know, talking about economic development, job sectors, blah blah. Agriculture in Oregon provides lots of jobs. And they're not going away because everyone has to eat. And those jobs are not going to go away. And I, okay, well, that's, that's kind of editorializing. I just have a couple of questions. On page eight of your annual report, on the far right column, halfway down, it says, in June 2015, a meeting was convened by Willamette Farm and Food Coalition at Bering to discuss a possible fit out in Clear Lake UGB expansion area. What does fit out mean?
I think it's, maybe there's not a punctuation mark, but a fit out in that area.
Yeah. That's possible.
So it didn't mean to?
Like what would fit in the area? Is that what?
So what we had been hearing?
What would fit? What wouldn't fit?
Along, along the lines of that area specifically, we had been hearing that the county, the city was interested in promoting food-based business or agriculture, food-based business out in that area. And we were wondering, has anybody asked the food-based businesses if they want to do that out in that area? If it meets their needs? If it meets their timeline? If it meets their criteria? And that was the purpose of that meeting.
I see.
So is, out in that area, is there a fit or not a fit was kind of what that's intended to say. Apologize if the wording isn't clear.
And then on the next page in the middle, it says planned activities. Advocate with city council for the creation of a regional food task force and be involved in its deliberations.
Yes.
Has that, that's happened? There's?
We have been advocating rather vigorously for a task force for a number of years.
It's not yet been formed?
No, it has not.
What would be the, the focus of the task force?
The focus of?
Their purview. What would they, I mean, you know, you have a food task force, but what exactly does that mean?
Looking to understand the economic, from, I sit on the economic development committee. I'm interested personally, and I think the commission as well is interested in understanding what is the real economic picture of the food-based businesses? We know that we are successful in food and beverage businesses locally. How many jobs does that create? And how can we create more of it? How can we make more and better and continue to expand and improve our success in that area?
Okay. All right. Well, I know one way that you can't do it, and that's by covering up class one and class two soils. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Chris, you're up.
Thank you. I really want to express a lot of appreciation for the work that you're doing because to be really effective, sustainability needs to really encompass very careful planning. You can't, you know, practice sustainability if you don't know what the future is going to be, or at least have a good prediction of what the future's going to be. And your help to us is critical in that role because we deal a lot in the future, whether it's in transportation, land use, anything. We're always trying to anticipate or guess what the future's going to be. And I think in a certain way, we want to do that in a sustainable way. And so we talk around the different subjects that concern us that are related to sustainability. And one that has come up is the notion of how will our population be affected by climate? Will, you know, and refugee, sounds like people are fleeing for their lives, but migration is, I think, a legitimate concern. And it occurs to me that around sustainability, there's other factors above climate that also affect economics, where the jobs are. Do we have a strong economic base or is there a stronger economic base somewhere else? Because in the past, a weak economic base has caused an outflow of people as opposed to an inflow. Now, we're working to try to create an economic stability, but that is another one of the factors you have to try to anticipate as you said, what, what does sustainability look like? Legislative, regulatory, and political is another one. No one's really talked about the notion of political migration, but that is very possible that may occur. I can think of New England and an entire state that were settled by religious migration. That maybe is not just figment of the past, that may also occur again in the future. Who knows? Cultural and social migration, we've already seen a certain degree of that, but how much of influence will that be? So there's a number of different variables beyond climate that affect what we're trying to do as we predict the future. And that becomes extremely difficult. And so your ability to help us in all of those areas, say, we think this will have this influence and that will have that influence. So you do have a role in economic development, and you do have a role in land use, and you do have a role in climate. And I think that is where you can be of greatest service to us and say, we're doing these things to try to improve sustainability in this sense, but you're also trying to help us achieve sustainability in this sense, which requires a broader view. And so anything you can do to provide study and advice and advocacy around any one of those variables, I think would be, would be very helpful for us because there's some of those people we haven't even talked about, but may actually have an impact on a future that ain't what it used to be.
So we're going to go into round two now, and I have Mike and Alan at break in round two. But before that, I just want to make a comment that I attended actually the meeting in June around the food cluster. And work's been done that we have three to four clusters here that really we think are the ones that we allow us to do good economic development, provide jobs and opportunity, and still stay within our value system. And at that meeting, what we heard, and you guys can fill in other parts of it, but I just specifically remember both Organic Food Company and Glory Bee, part of our ag system, really good, sustainable, high-valued businesses that do what we like, are both in dire need of more space. So that is something within the sectors that we already have where people are needing more space to grow and build our local economy and within the ag, ag sector. So there is a meeting there of a lot of things. The other thing that came up in that, what is exactly what they're going to be looking at is where do those things need to be located to work well? And so there's a lot of variables in it, but there was a very robust discussion about that, and the need was, it was immediate. So that's, that's just the truth of what, what the discussion was about, right? And I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but that's, that's what I heard.
Well, we heard from, we heard from them very clearly on that. A little bit of, a little bit of a mismatch between timelines because, as you said, their need is very immediate and within the next two years at the most for some of the things that, expansions that they want to do. So that, therein lies one of the examples of not quite a fit with, with the planning horizon on that particular area. But it was useful to get that on the table and talk about what's really happening.
A discussion with some folks who are farming out there who like the idea of something that joins their farm, which creates a bigger pole. So there's, there's a lot of room for some really robust discussion there. Okay, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I've said for a number of years, I think one of the smartest things we can do from an economic development standpoint, from a security standpoint, from a sustainability standpoint, is to do a better job growing our own. From businesses to food, and when they intersect in this way, that makes it even better. I can say that I'm, I'm proud because I'm kind of a, one of those nerds that grows a whole lot of the stuff that my family eats in my backyard. I, I think we probably eat something that I've grown in the backyard every single day of the year. So I wonder how much work we do for that kind of community security and sustainability to help promote what people grow in their own spaces and to provide more space for community gardens. To me, that's an underutilized area of promotion that we could be doing in our community that I'm certainly in favor of. On the other front that I started before, we know for a fact certain that we're moving forward with a base number. And as you know, that population forecast, that guessing what the future looks like is at the very heart and the very starting line of almost everything that we do, both from a legal standpoint and from a smart planning standpoint. And we know we're moving forward for the next 20 years with a number that's wrong. And we know it because we've decided to accept the 35,000 number because we don't want to go through several more years of envision Eugene to get to the finish line. So we're accepting a number we know is wrong when PSU has already told us it's over 40,000. And again, their number doesn't take into account what we might expect with regard to what the climate does. I remember Matt and Mark Schlossberg saying, you know, from Eugene to Alaska is going to be the new California in the next 20 years. And they talk about this in class all the time when they're talking to students as experts. So my question is, will you please help us put a finer point on what that number should be? Can you please look into the best available information and help us make better decisions because we're going to have the TSP? We're, and we're going to have to use it based on the number we accepted. But there are going to be decisions where we have flexibility and we need to be making a decision based on what's actually likely to happen rather than on what we can legally get away with. And I prefer to be much better informed, and I think you guys are the ones to help us do it. Can you add that to your work plan under emerging issues is help us do a better job with population forecast?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yep. It's really important.
Alan?
Yeah, before we move away from this topic, I just wanted to recognize Babe O'Sullivan and the great work that she's been doing as the Sustainability Manager, Coordinator. And, and this wouldn't have happened without Babe's great work. So thank you, Babe, for the great work and continue to do. George, if you're looking for a food task force proposal, there was one that Counselor Evans and I put forward a couple of months, several months ago, that you might refer to that for what that looks like. There are some things embedded in here that I wanted to bring to people's attention. There are some things embedded in here that I wanted to bring to people's attention that are really tough issues and/or very innovative. For instance, the Climate Recovery Ordinance and the Community-Wide Greenhouse Gas Reduction Goal is something that's coming up. And the path to get, to be on the, on the scientifically proven path that we need to be on is going to be a tough row to hoe, and that's going to be a big issue where we might want to have the Sustainability Commission help us. Embedded in that was the local greenhouse gas reduction program. So if we're going to do things that we need to do in order to reduce our footprint within the community, let's focus on doing it locally as an economic development thing. That's a really innovative way of looking at this problem and as a very creative solution. I'll point out, though, that Oregon Leadership and Sustainability at the Institute of Sustainability at the U of O declined to help us on that because they said it was too complicated. And the bike share program's coming up, that's something that's going to be really interesting to watch. Another one is Vision Zero, which is Vision Zero Injuries and Deaths on our transportation system. That's something that has a lot of social equity and a lot of sustainability embedded in it. We're going to, coming up on a lot of economic development conversations, in particular, green, clean technologies, jobs, food and beverage sector jobs we're talking about. We might want to ask the Sustainability Commission as we move into those about what their ideas are. And then finally, on refugees, climate refugees, it's very complicated. And unfortunately, there isn't hardly any research done on this stuff. And it is, got all those complexities that Chris was talking about, which makes it difficult to deal with. And it's also, with all the other things relying around climate change, that's going to really be a second or a third-tier issue. And so it's not going to get a lot of attention. And it's not necessarily true that, that climate refugees means that we're going to have a lot of people moving here. You would have thought that in California, where they're having, today they just announced that the Sierra Snowpack is the worst snowpack they've had in 500 years, that they have mandated 50, or 25 to 30 percent reductions in water use, that we would have seen this mass migration of people because of those kind of things and economic dislocation. But we haven't seen that. And I'm not sure that it's necessarily true. The economic hub around that is going to prevent that. So, and we haven't even talked about the impact of technological improvements to help us get through that problem. So I think there's lots to do in the water conservation area to help us there, but I don't necessarily know that climate change is going to have a bunch of people moving here.
Great.
Oh, exactly. I'd agree with that, Alan. I see a lot of people who are poor people that are moving up here on a regular basis and streaming into the Northwest. There are black people in Medford now, a lot of them. They weren't that way when I came here. But my question, I want to pivot over to, back to transportation and specifically kind of an ask around the Commission looking at and, and getting some, some feedback to us specifically around financing a Highway Trust Fund and moving from the gas tax, which has been dead for years, to the VMT system, which ODOT has been piloting for about the last five or six years, that is now being looked nationally as a replacement for the gas tax. It also is a replacement also for us on the state level and the local level in terms of funding our matches for roads, bridges, bike paths, pedestrian ways, all of that. And I think that we need to, you know, get ahead of the curve to a certain degree and be extremely supportive of making this paradigm shift to a system that is going to be more equitable and fair in terms of taxing people for road usage instead of the whole thing about, you know, laying it all on the fuel system, which is not, is, is not going to be productive for us at all. The other thing, too, is that in parallel, I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but Ethan Nelson from the staff has been working with myself and Counselor Saret and Counselor Pryor and others in the Bethel Corridor towards a Bethel Economic Development Plan, which we're going to be kind of taking the wraps off here next week with a work session. And a lot of that focus is around the food and beverage industry and how we can create a food hub or hubs that, that will be in that section of the community that will allow us to leverage our assets in the agricultural realm to be able to, one, create more food security for us locally, so that we can have more than 6% of our food come from our local community, and to also be able to create the kind of economic drive and engine that we need to be able to maximize our return and revenue in, in terms of what we can produce that we export to other parts of the country and the world.
You know, that makes me think that when we're going through an economic discussion with Council on the various sectors and over time, and that's the plan, right? Do you manage her? Right? And, and so as we go through the food sector, the discussion kind of, for us, is what part of that is our, what part of that do we need to be paying attention to, as opposed to what the county's doing, what that other folks are doing? What's our part in that, that we can really do something substantial about? And I think maybe we'll start that discussion with you guys, with, with the Bethel party. But I just think that may be something you want to pay attention to as we, as we go through that as well. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I wanted to say, great discussion. Thank you very much. And I hope you'll convey to the whole Commission how much we appreciate the thoroughness and the thoughtfulness of, of the work that you've had underway. And we will look forward to having more of these discussions as we make our way through a lot of our policy discussions that are, that are upcoming. So thank you all very, very much.
And we've got a motion to-
Give a motion?
Yes. So I'll, I'll move to approve the Sustainability Commission's FY16 work plan.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can probably do our consent calendar.
Oh, thanks, good. Uh, yeah, you ready?
Yep.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved in second. Betty?
Um, to find the spot. I'd like to pull Item B.
Okay. Item B. Vote on the minutes. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Five, six, seven, eight. Okay, Betty?
Okay. I noticed that there is not anything about cell towers in the future tentative agenda. And I think that we were supposed to come back with a work session telling us what we can do. We had a work session, but what we heard was what we already knew, what we can't do to regulate cell towers. And I think that we were going to have an update on what we can do, how we can strengthen our ordinance, if there are any ways. And I don't see that anywhere in the tentative agenda.
What I have seen is a draft of information about what we can do. Our intent was to send that to Council, and then if you'd like to move forward in any or all of those, we can come back with a proper, whether it's an ordinance or policies. So you'll be receiving something within the next two weeks on that topic.
And will that, will it be on the agenda at some point?
I think if the Council would like it to be on the agenda, it sure will be.
I thought we already agreed that it would be a long time ago, but-
I'd have to go back and check. I don't know, has the Council agreed to have the next follow-on work session or not? I just don't recall that. But what we, what we did say is we would provide you information on what we can do to change our ordinance. So we will provide that information.
It may be, it would be good to do something, if we can do something, before this topic comes up again, before, instead of waiting until there is an urgency.
True. I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing that's not on the tentative working agenda is the, we did a work session poll on economic development, focused on the four areas of food and beverage, advanced manufacturing, clean green technologies, and high-tech. And, and none of that is on this agenda either.
We have, we have several things that are in the queue, waiting to go. And so part of it is, is just trying to get them planned appropriately as things come up, so.
And we did have one meeting where we really talked about what we've been doing and the-
And the matrix, yeah.
Yeah.
And the baker's dozen and all of those kinds of things, so.
Okay. George?
Thanks, Mayor. Another thing that's not on the agenda is refining of the workforce housing component of MPT.
That's it.
There is one on here.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, April or October 14th is the first work, first work session on that.
Okay, perfect. Because it wasn't in, in past.
Yeah. We'd anticipate there'll be more than just one work session on that.
I think it will probably take more than that. It's kind of complicated to get it right. Well, never mind. Thank you.
Never mind. On Item B. All those in favor, please indicate. Okay. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It passes. All right. So it says, we'll see you at 7:00.
Did you want to do the committee reports?
Committee reports?
At the rooftop.
Totally went over that one. Just like that. Okay. Maybe it's because of, so you have a committee report? We're just going on the table.
Yeah, so I have a committee report from the Police Commission, which met last Thursday. And we welcomed one new member, who, of course, his name I've forgotten at the moment, and also a new liaison from the Civilian Review Board. And in addition to that, we discussed further a policy that's being revised on, basically on crowd management, civil disturbances, and had very good conversation about that and asked for a little bit of more work before it comes back for the Commission to approve. And then we also got a presentation on the department's work on mental health crisis response. So we got an update on the, how they've been using crisis intervention training, which every officer goes through. And then we also heard from Lieutenant Reynolds, who brought a guest, Dr. Leeds, who they've been working with in a consulting fashion to think about how we have a more coordinated response when people are in mental health crises, starting with the framework of veterans, but using that then to expand out further. It's a work in progress. There's still a lot of work to be done, but they are really looking to coordinate with other agencies in the community, the veterans, the Vet Center, and the new hospital when it opens, Lane County Behavioral Health, and cahoots. So there is a lot of, I think, very good, hard work being done to bring forward to the community, hopefully, a new and more effective way to deal with folks in the community who experience mental health crisis.
Great news. George?
Thank you. Yeah, the Lane Workforce Partnership, we finally got all, there's actually now three sub-boards, I guess you might call them, and all the officers have been appointed, and all the board members have been appointed. The overall mission of, of the Lane Workforce Partnership is basically not going to change, it's just how it's been structured under the new federal guidelines. On the Workforce Council, which is the elected officials, there is one position being shared by Mike Fleck, Cottage Grove City Counselor, and Joe Henry, who's the Mayor of Florence. And the other positions, Joey Moore, myself, and Fay Stewart. So those, that's the Lane Workforce Council, which basically we're the overseers of the Lane Workforce Partnership. So we're going to have a strategic planning meeting coming up, October 15th, to kind of set new, new goals and, and guidelines. Unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong stack of papers for the travel in county. I got the strategic planning for 2015 instead of the annual report, which will be presented by Kerry Weston, CEO, to the Board of County Commissioners on September 29th, which is the Tuesday. What I wanted to highlight was the, the amount of money that has been pumped into not only Eugene, but the entire Lane County area through the tourism industry, and the increases of the transit route taxes that have been coming into the community because of the added, the added activity through the, the tourism industry. And then one last thing, on August 3rd, I attended the meet and greet of the SWEDCO applicants for the new Director of the South Climate Economic Development Committee, Council. Of the, the three applicants that I, I met and talked with, there's one, in my opinion, that really stood out above the others, but I don't know, Mayor, if you're going to make a comment on that, I'll just let it go at that point. But there was one candidate that I was really impressed with, and hopefully, everything bettered out okay within, so.
Okay. I'm not, I don't have a committee report, but I have some things to say. But George just said about the transit, all the money coming into us from the hotel taxes and so forth, should, takes me back to our discussion of whether we could transfer some of that money to the general fund, and I think we should consider that when we talk about the budget. But what I am hearing a lot from constituents right now is great concern over South Atlantic rezoning. And in addition to people talking about people loitering downtown, I've had comments that if we hadn't taken away the benches and the walls, people might be sitting on them instead of lying, lying on the ground, which is something I totally agree with. Thank you.
George?
Um, let's see. The only thing I have is the McKenzie Watershed Council, and October 2nd is the due date for this grant proposal that they're almost done with to OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. It's for a grant for $4.5 million that would be spent over six years for all kinds of improvements in habitat restoration and eradication of invasive species, and helping all the residents upgrade their septic tanks, all kinds of things. And they have a very good chance of getting it, too. So that's the big news. And then next, next month, we'll be having our annual retreat to, you know, do the year end review of all the projects that they've completed. And there's a lot of really good ones, and I'll share those when that's compiled with you. And then also come up with next year's work plan. That's it.
Mike?
Claire did a fantastic job with the Police Commission report. Thank you very much for doing that. The only other thing I would add to that is that George Rhodey was honored as well in that meeting for his long service to both the Police Commission and to the Citizens' Review Board. And to that, I would add that I had the privilege, of course, to sit with the mayor for her mayor's one-on-one at the River Road Santa Clara Fred Meyer here a few weeks back, and boy, was that fun.
I don't have any things on here. I was interested in the Lane Transit MX Steering Committee. Who's on that? If you have anything to say about that. And I will point out that the Sustainability Commission did a retreat in August, so they get bonus points for that. That's me.
Thank you. Chris, you got anything?
Yeah, the Housing Policy Board had a meeting today, and as I've mentioned before, the funding element of Housing Policy Board has been moved over to a different group, which leaves the Housing Policy Board in the position of saying, what is our role? What does our relevance, what is our value to the different partners and to the different players? And we had a really good conversation today about that in terms of how does each partner feel that what they're putting in is coming back in terms of what they're getting out of it? And part of the conversation was around who else might benefit from actually being on it. And we talked about providers, since there are no longer a conflict of interest about funding, that having providers on there and people who more fully represent the population that's being served would be both good additions to that group. So in whatever form it continues, in whatever role it takes, I think having those elements in there will really help a lot in terms of their ability to provide good advice for us around housing. And there has been conversation, is the Housing Policy Board a duplicate in terms of what the Poverty and Homelessness Commission is doing? And I think that's a very legitimate question. I think there is some overlap, but I also think there's a large amount of area where they don't. So I think definitely cooperation and coordination is in order, but they can actually complement each other in terms of covering different aspects of- each other in terms of covering different aspects of shelter through housing. So it was, it was a great meeting today.
Where did the funding shift to?
Well, the funding is going to shift to a, a different committee that will be made up of the specific partners involved in wherever the funding requests are, plus some experts. So the Housing Policy Board is no longer itself the body that's making those funding decisions, but kind of a subcommittee of that group.
I'd say there's plenty of work for everybody.
Yeah.
And a lot to do.
Okay. And the Human Rights Commission had a retreat back in late July, early August. So I was able to attend one, the first meeting, but not the second meeting. Again, there's, there's a high emphasis on the homelessness situation here in Eugene as well as a, a refocusing or re-effort around the issues around race here locally. And also, we're going to actually have a, our first meeting of the new fall season tomorrow evening and the smoking ban will be on the agenda for that meeting as well. So we have a fairly robust agenda for tomorrow night and I expect that, you know, we'll have some substantive things that come out of the Human Rights Commission over the next few weeks and months. And then we, we don't reconvene with the Human Services Commission until...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yes. So that's, that's my report, Mayor.
So in terms, in terms of the South, Southern Willamette Economic Development Corporation, we did have the, go through trying to find somebody and we thought, we thought we had a really good candidate. I think the best way that, and John's perfectly welcome to chime in here, I think what we found was he was a very, very good and talented person. We all thought highly of him, but his, what he wanted to do didn't align with what we wanted someone to do. So it was just not a, a good match. And so we're back to the drawing boards. And the other thing I wanted to say is this morning that we put the shovel in the dirt for Bascom Village Part Two. That will be 48 additional units. We have now three, is it 3,000 units in the, in the metro area of affordable housing? So...
Sounds about right.
So still need more, but that's substantial. So Betty, you have something else you want to...
Just an announcement there, and I think most of the people concerned already know, but there'll be a meeting at Good Samaritan on the 16th, which is tomorrow. No, it's Wednesday. Yes. Wednesday evening about the South Willamette rezoning. And it's sponsored by four neighborhood groups and people who are concerned it would be advised to go there and ask their questions and express their concerns. It starts at 7:00 PM at Good Samaritan.
Thank you for that.
Alan, I referenced LTD. I guess the biggest story is that the, the $75 million has come in to continue on with the work on the, the West Eugene EMX route. The other two things is LTD is getting involved with the Moving Ahead Project. We had a brief discussion about that, about the Level One screening. At our next meeting, they're going to bring back the results of the community outreach that they've done on the Level One screening for the Moving Ahead. And also we have preliminary discussions about Vision Zero.
Good.
You know, as far as what are the next steps for LTD? It was a beginning conversation and that's something else we're going to have another discussion on at, at the next meetings.
Great. Okay, we're going to give us time to switch gears here. Thank you, everybody. We'll be back at 7:30.